If you would please stand with me.
I'm going to ask Clerk Strike to start us off with prayer.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come together this morning. We thank you for the beauty of your creation this morning as spring starts showing its face in our area. And we just, again, thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed on us. We ask your guidance and blessing on the discussions this morning and the considerations that are made. We ask that all be done in your favor, in Jesus's name.
Amen. Thank you, Clerk. We'll now do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Hook there, are you?
My cord got tangled up in my chair. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Hampshire County Commission meeting, Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. And I'll call the meeting to order. And our first business is the minutes from our last meeting. All the commissioners do get digital copies of that ahead of time to review. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve those or any comments or corrections needed.
I'll make a motion. Do we approve the minutes as submitted?
A second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Okay, we will move on to the President's and Commissioners' report. I will be briefed today. I did have a few meetings. I wanted to report on the Committee on Aging. They're building here in Romney. They do have the new handicap, updated handicap access door completed. And they are looking to get a large van for some more transportation opportunities. They have had the funding in the past year to be able to make that improvement, so they're looking forward to that. And I did attend that meeting week before last. Update on the Health Department Mobile Unit Building. At our last meeting, the Commissioners voted to retain Mr. Richard Gay for the, as an attorney on that. I spoke with him on the phone directly after our meeting two weeks ago, and then I followed up, sending him the pertinent information for that. The problem there is that there, we ran into some excavation issues, which the Commission believes should have been addressed in the pre-engineering work for that, but it wasn't. They did do soil tests. The price of the excess excavation, excess excavation, that's a tongue twister. But anyway, that did come down considerably, but it's still more than the, than what I feel the Commission's responsible for. So we are keeping an eye on that, and hopefully we can continue to move forward. They did resubmit some paperwork for the grant to cover that. So we will continue to watch that and see what happens. Not too much else to report on. A lot of day-to-day phone calls and emails. But I'll leave it at that for today. Commissioner Mance, you have a report?
I do. I'm going to try and keep it short as well. I had a good sync with John Todd Hott with the Development Authority. Current status of the pending projects that we've got coming and what he anticipates the Development Authority is going to be focusing on for the next six months to a year. A lot of good things coming. I think we'll probably be able to talk about development on a few of those projects here in the near future. Also got to sync up with representatives from our Planning Commission. No surprise that we've got several things that are going to involve the Planning Commission in the near future, new hire. We've got to clean some stuff up with regards to our current building code. And we've also got all of the pressure that is, you know, towards the county in relation to renewables. So between that and the comprehensive plan development, I think it's going to be a busy year for the Planning Commission as well. But we're going to chart a game plan and moving forward. Everything else, I think, we can cover in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Mance. I'll pass the floor along to Commissioner Brill.
Mr. President, I have not yet had a meeting with any of the boards that I've been appointed to, but have several of those coming up in the next couple of weeks and look forward to reporting back at that time.
Okay. Clerk, we're already a little bit ahead of schedule. Do you have any housekeeping you want to address with us?
I do. One of the things under unscheduled housekeeping is budgetary things. And since I'm not asking really for a decision this morning, and we are in the process of getting the budget work done, we have our meeting with department heads regarding their proposed expenditures coming up on Friday, and I have a schedule set up for that, starting at 1:00 p.m. Notice is on the front door, by the way, as well. But we have the good problem of having, because of our increased revenue, increased assessments, the law requires that we only, I say we, but as a county and because part of the custodian of those funds, I include myself here, can only increase taxes so much, and it's limited pretty severely. So there's a calculation in the formula there requiring to see if you need to do a rollback. Well, we do. So we have been at the max rate of 14.3 cents per hundred on Class 1 property. And remember, Class 1 property is pretty much a placeholder. It's a value assigned, and everything else works in a two-to-one ratio above that. Class 2 is 28.6 percent. Class 3 is 57.2, 3 and 4. So they multiply off of that Class 1 rate, but that's what we use for our calculations. In the old days, they used it, actually. But anyway, bottom line, our rollback indicates that we need to go to 14.03 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. We can go up to the 14.3. The law allows for an increase to that maximum level because it's not more than a 2% increase if we have a public hearing. So in order to get a public hearing properly notified, I needed to talk to you about this morning. I have the advertisement at the review, should you decide to do that. And they need to have it by 10:00 in order to print their paper. But we have a summary sheet there in front of you, and I sent this to Commissioner Mance as well. The total revenues at the rollback rate, the 14.03, would be $5,973,171. At the old rate or at the proposed rate allowed after the hearing, the revenues would be $6,88,122. The difference is $114,941. Our revenues are up significantly, even with the, I said significantly, but modestly. Even over with the 14.03, last year's revenues were $5,702,800, which is a difference of an increase of $270,000, $270,891. If we went to the higher rate, the, again, it'd be $114,000 more, $385,000. So there is some things to keep in mind. One is that the PEIA insurance increase, which the Commission has always predominantly covered, particularly for full-time, single employees, that increase is going to be about $120,000 this year. And if a raise is, modest raise is given to the employees for 100 employees, that'd be another $120,000 roughly. So that would pretty much cover most of the increase in assessments, but, you know, we're going to, we're going to survive one way or the other. I think the thing to maybe bear in mind, we can go ahead and run the ad. And as we get more into the expenditure side of things, and I don't foresee anything big coming in expenditures. Seems like most of the department heads have been pretty modest with requests, pretty much the same as last year with the exception of, you know, they put in some raises, which that's under y'all's control. So, you know, I think we have a pretty stable budget, one way or the other. We could go ahead and run the ad, and if, after reviewing that, you decide to stamp cancel as far as the hearing goes. All we're asking today is to, do you want to have a hearing or not? The hearing would be on the 25th, in our meeting when we will vote on the budget, because we have to have it submitted by the 28th. So I hope I didn't make that too muddy.
No, no, thank you, Clerk. Just to reiterate, in my words, basically with the increased property values over the past, especially the past year, the rate at which we multiply your tax or our tax had to be rolled back. So it's a small savings. The levy rate went from 1430 to 1403. And again, that's, you know, because the property values in Hampshire County have increased fairly significantly. So, but gentlemen, I, my opinion is, you know, we are still looking like we're over $270,000 in increased revenue than what we normally have to deal with. And then within the last year, with, again, with the increased property values causing taxes to go up some and an increased ambulance fee, you know, I feel like it would be a good time not to keep the rate at the max and let it roll back to the 1403. Also, you know, that, we wouldn't need to take any action today if we just leave it where it is. Gentlemen, you have any comments?
I do, gentlemen. I think this is an opportunity for us to actually hear the public's input. Nobody, most people are not in favor as, you know, for anything that would resemble a tax increase. This would be maintenance of the tax rate that we've held at the county for several years. So I think the discussion is a little bit of a different flavor. But there is also public works that could be done with that revenue. There are, you know, considerations for our public employees that could be done with that revenue. And really, I think that it's an opportunity for us to actually hold a public hearing and to take that public consideration into account as members of the governing body. If, especially if we have the time. I would be in favor of at least having the hearing.
Well, I would point out, because, and it's a timeframe we didn't cause, it's in law, that we cannot have a hearing prior to the meeting on the 25th, when we have to actually decide on what the budget is. So having an idea of which way we're going to go heading into that helps us in our calculations and so on. As far as a public hearing goes, we can have things prepared to go both ways for your approval at that time. But there can't be a hearing before the 25th.
And it requires one hearing.
Yes.
Clerk.
Commissioner Brill?
Well, I mean, gentlemen, myself personally, obviously, this is all relatively new. To me, I have tried my best to look over some previous year's numbers and kind of assess where we are. Receiving this information from the clerk this week, I have reviewed it. And, you know, the input, obviously, from the community would be beneficial from the citizens. It would, I think, assist me and even help me in understanding it a little bit. I, too, would, would, I think, you know, anytime you're considering, I know this isn't necessarily an increase, but there could potentially be a decrease to the taxpayers, that is something we have to think about. Commissioner Mance, I would agree that there are possibly opportunities to be able to utilize these funds for things that we could do as a commission, so.
It's not going to cost anything to go ahead and have the hearing. I mean, if you guys kind of are in agreement to proceed with that, that's easy, so whichever way you want to go.
I would be in favor of having the hearing.
Okay, well, we'll proceed with the hearing advertisement at the newspaper for public clarification. I'll just reiterate that that's strictly a hearing. To hear the public's input doesn't mean we are necessarily increasing the rate or keeping it at the lower rate at this time, that we will decide, we will decide that after hearing from the public.
Clerk Strike, is there any way, I think I saw in an earlier version of the information that came out with relation to this, that we could provide to the public what the average impact per household would be for both of these courses of action?
Yeah, we could post it on our website or, you know, short of an advertisement in the paper, I couldn't tell you how else to do that, but yes, absolutely.
That would help the public chew on this a little bit better.
I'm recalling my calculations, what I'd sent out. I took a $200,000 Class 2 assessment. The value of your property is assessed at $200,000. The tax bill, the difference is about $6 between the two rates, of course, the 1430 being slightly higher. Now, we're paying, some people are paying Class 3, some people have million-dollar assessments. Not everybody has a $200,000 assessment either. I mean, I'm just going, if you have a million-dollar value assessment, I think the difference was $54, just under 60. So, I mean, you're not talking a huge savings to the average taxpayer. $114,000 is significant to the county budget, and we don't know what costs may come up. You know, we're projecting our costs, but that's the best we can do on that. So, yeah, it's not a real painful thing for the consumer, taxpayer. However, it is a tax increase, so, you know.
Yeah, looking at the rate, gentlemen, and I ran some numbers just over some examples after the clerk sent us the information. It's very minor on the average Class 2 household. It can get significant on the business and commercial properties. And when I say significant, that doesn't mean it's a really large value, but it does hit, you know, just because of the tax law and the way the rates are, it becomes more of a savings for the business properties. Because I did run just a few tax tickets to see what it would do. So we will just leave the advertisement alone then, Clerk.
Very well.
Not being on the agenda, we won't take action there. We'll just let the advertisement be as it is. And you explained the time constraints that we had with that. There's nothing we can do about not being able to get it on the agenda.
Well, yeah, just consensus is good enough, and, you know, the decision that counts is in two weeks, so.
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner, did you want to say something? Did you start to say something?
I apologize. I just said thank you. Yeah, I just said thank you to Clerk Strike for his work on this so far.
Okay, Ms. Deborah Fleming, Shenandoah Chapter, American Red Cross Proclamation. Good morning. How are you all today?
Great.
Doing well, thank you. This is Josh Mongold. He is our Chair of our Board, so he's actually going to present today. But we want to thank you for having us here today.
Sir, could you scoot the microphone over?
Over. How's this?
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you all for allowing us here to present today. Obviously, I'm the board of the chair, Josh Mongold. I've got Deborah Fleming here, the new Executive Director for the Shenandoah Valley Chapter. Our chapter encompasses Washington County, Maryland, the counties of Jefferson, Berkeley, Morgan, Hardy, and Hampshire County in West Virginia, Frederick County, Clark County, Warren, Shenandoah, and Page Counties in Virginia, and the city of Winchester. They like that independence. So we have a, you know, broad, broad scope here. Natural disaster, national disasters have been increasing in frequency and intensity and are occurring in areas that typically haven't seen large disasters. In 1980, the American Red Cross responded to an average of three natural disasters a year. Last year, they responded to 27, and we're on target to double that number this year. You've seen the devastation caused by storms, most recently impacting North Carolina, Kentucky, and southern West Virginia, communities just like your own. Every community needs to prepare for disaster, so when the roads and bridges get washed out and the power lines and communication tools are down, families have the knowledge and resources they need to stay well until help can arrive. One of the other unseen costs of disasters and inclement weather is the loss of blood products. When blood drives have to close due to storms, we lose life-saving resources that cannot be replaced. I am a blood drive sponsor myself. I run a large blood drive out in the eastern Panhandle area. Blood is one of those unique products that we can't synthetically make in a lab. We have to, you know, get actual donor blood for the human body to accept it. And one thing that people don't realize about our blood usage, because I came out of the hospital world as a lab tech, where we ran the blood bank statistically out there, 58% of our blood usage was to hematology-oncology. So we use more blood for cancer patients than we use for, you know, disasters, trauma, surgeries. And that's due to the chemo and radiation, just devastating the bone marrow, and they're unable to produce the blood. So always, blood drives is one of our pitches, you know, is one of our most needed resources that any county can, you know, help us out with. The American Red Cross helps to prepare communities before a disaster occurs, whether big, like North Carolina or Kentucky floods, or small, like a single-house family fire. Last year, in the Greater Shenandoah Valley Chapter, we collected over 16,000 units of blood, assisted approximately 200 families who experienced a disaster, installed nearly 1,500 smoke alarms, provided nearly 600 services to military veterans and their families, trained nearly 7,000 people in life-saving skills, and 500 students in preparedness education. The American Red Cross could not fulfill its mission without the dedicated volunteers who give selflessly to their time and the generosity of our donors. And yet, due to chronic state of our disaster relief operations and constant needs for blood, we're always in need of blood drive sponsors, blood donors, volunteers, and financial donations. We are also actively expanding our board, and we do not currently have a Hampshire County representative on our board for the American Red Cross. So my, you know, personal pitch to you all is if you know somebody here in your community that's, you know, well-connected and they believe in the mission of, you know, helping others, we'd love to be connected with them because we'd like to ideally have a representative from every county on the board if we could. So this 11th day of March, 2025, I ask that you declare March as Red Cross Month to recognize the hard work and dedication of the volunteers who serve this community and the donors who support our mission. We also request members of Hampshire County to join us in our mission to alleviate human suffering and to be a beacon of hope to those experiencing their darkest hour. For those interested in helping, you can go to redcross.org or call 1-800-RED-CROSS. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, you have any questions for this lady and gentleman?
Well, just thank you both for being here. Appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you all for having us.
Red Cross is extremely important.
Thank you. I did notice that you have a mitigation plan that you're working on. I'm happy to reach out to our volunteers who have worked in that. That is something that I did do. I used to be a disaster program manager, and that's something that we do help the counties with if they ask, so definitely something that we can support as well.
Gentlemen, we want to move to certify the, would you read your proclamation again, sir, or your basic proclamation sentence there?
I'll let Deborah read that one for you guys.
Okay. Whereas during the American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people of Hampshire County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. Whereas the generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviate human suffering. Whereas today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through their unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. Whereas the Red Cross assists families impacted by a disaster such as a home fire or flood, installs free smoke alarms making homes safer, educates students in preparedness education, collects blood at local blood drives, and provides service to our military members, veterans, and their family. Whereas we, the Commissioners of Hampshire County, hereby recognize the Month of March in honor of all those who lead their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join us in this commitment to strengthen our community.
Yeah, Mr. President, I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Second.
Or Commissioner Mance will second. We got a move, motion and a second for the American Red Cross Proclamation in Hampshire County. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need them to sign anything? Do they sign the proclamation?
It says, "Insert signature page." You want to get that later.
No, I've got it. I just wanted to note that you needed a hard copy signed.
Oh, okay.
Apparently not. Good. We're good.
So you don't need this back then?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Convention and Visitors Bureau funding request for 2026, 25, 26.
It's hard to be calling it 26 yet, but.
Soon enough.
They've already got the pamphlet.
Good morning, Peg and Tina.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for seeing us today, and thank you for. Thank you for seeing us today, and thank you for your support that the Commissioners have given us over these years. Just as a little bit of an explanation, since two of the Commissioners were not here on the Commission three years ago, but three years ago, the state of West Virginia mandated through law that, that the Convention Visitors Bureau be accredited, that they have an Executive Director. And there are various requirements, like 40% of the budget has to go to marketing, 40% can go to payroll personnel, and 20% to operating. And this is required of us. At that time, we did not have an Executive Director. We had gone through a cost-saving measure of eliminating that position, and the Board was acting in that, in that capacity, attempting to act in that capacity. So three years ago, we advertised, and we were fortunate to be able to hire Tina Ladd as our Executive Director. Tina brought her enthusiasm and her experience to us. She was instrumental in getting us accredited that first year, and now we have just been accredited for another three years, thanks to Tina's work. But it would not have happened without your support. If you, if the Commissioners had not been willing to take us a few steps higher and give us more of the tax, hotel-motel tax, we would not have been able to do that. The option would have been to not have a Convention Visitors Bureau or to partner with another county so that we could share an Executive Director. And with the help of the Commissioners, we were able to have it. And the various things you see, the farm crawl and various things like that, are a result of our having an Executive Director. And with that, I would like to have Tina talk to you.
Good morning. We're back again. So you all have a copy of our annual report, which I think that you received last fall, but I can actually email one of those off if needed to Logan. And a copy of our accreditation letter. We just got accredited again in January, which is a pretty, it's a, it's a long and detailed process. We submit our, all of this information plus more to get accredited. We have to submit this information to the state. So if you would go to the West Virginia State Legislature website and look under where the, the reports are filed, you would see our CVB reports filed there as well as everyone else in the state who has filed. So we're very transparent that way. And I just wanted to mention that our lodging tax that we receive, that tax is collected from people who come into the county and stay here. So they're either in short-term rentals, like vacation homes, they're in our hotel, our motel, or our resort. So the funds aren't being taken from local residents. County residents are not paying those taxes. State residents are not paying those taxes unless they're staying in, in a hotel-motel or, or the vacation home. So we're not asking for, we're not asking for additional funds from our citizens. We're asking just for a larger percentage of that lodging tax that's being collected. Currently, what the state mandates is that we receive 50%, but like Peg said, you have been very generous and, and help us so that we can budget properly. We're a smaller county as far as lodging tax. Of course, the goal is to try and grow that. But when they have that 40% payroll exemption, I don't know if you'd call it an exemption, the pay, the limit on that, that includes the employer taxes that are paid, and that includes any insurance that is paid in addition to the payroll. So I'll probably be a one-staffer for a long time because we'd have to get pretty far up there in order to, to pay someone else. But you know what? For now, we're fine with how we're going, but we just need the, we need that additional lodging tax in order to keep going at the, at the rate we've been going. And I, I think that we're, I know that we're doing well. I'm hopeful about this, this year coming up. We've already had a successful sip and savor event. I was actually in Charleston speaking at the Small Farms Conference, so I missed it. But I've been following up with a couple of people, and I can tell you that there were two businesses here in Romney who said that their business doubled that day. Another business, she hasn't had a chance to look at her figures yet, but I'm also collecting data to be able to share that with everyone just to show what the difference is when, when we're all working together to try to promote Hampshire County as a visitor destination. And so I got an email after that saying, "Are you doing anything for Easter? Is there a chance we could participate?" Which has now led us, as of last week, to doing, I don't even think you know this yet. We're doing a spring crawl, and I've already had four or five farms sign up for it. So it's going to be the same. It's going to be the, our retail shops, everybody participating. And that's going to be the day before Easter. It's just been a whirlwind. We are also teaming up with Mineral and Morgan County, and this will be, this will be the first time really that that's been mentioned. Our, our partnership, the reason that we're doing the partnership is because when you team up regionally with other counties, you get a significant, significant discount from West Virginia Tourism. So they will discount their things. They pay 75%. We have to pay 25%. Typically, it's 50/50, but with those two counties coming on board with us, we'll have our own, we already have a logo. We're, we have to have a landing page per West Virginia Tourism, and that region is going to be called the Potomac River Highlands Region. So our commonalities between the three of us are going to be our rivers, our history, and then the other individual things that makes up. But anyway, we're trying to get more people into, into our three counties and encourage them, of course, to visit the rest of West Virginia, but we want them, we want them to visit us as well. So we got a lot of things in the works. It's very exciting. But the main reason we're here is, yes, just to request this additional funding next fiscal year. And we do appreciate your support. Does anybody have any questions for us?
I'll, I'll just say, thank you, both the Board and Tina, for what you all been doing. I would say our decision three years to go, three years ago, as Peg mentioned, to make the move to be accredited and become a more aggressive CVB certainly looks like it's paid off, at least in my eyes, it has. So appreciate the, the effort to, to bring Hampshire County onto the map in some positive ways here over the past three years. And I'd say, keep up the good work. And again, we don't make budget decisions today. We are looking at that on Friday, so.
Gentlemen, you have any comments, questions for these ladies?
I would just again say thank you. I know you've done a lot of really good things the last several years. While I'm new here, obviously, I've still seen what's going on in the county. And, and thank you and your Board for what you've done.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
So, thank you both, and awesome work. Yeah, I would also just say, continue the upward trend and continue to push for the same kinds of innovation that you guys have been able to produce over the last couple of years. I know that bandwidth is an issue, especially, you know, as you're, you know, a very small shop, but keep the good ideas coming, and, you know, we'll support where we can. Thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah, I will say too, when we were at the Small Farms Conference and everybody was asking, like, where, where was I from? And I said Hampshire County. And just about every single person replied, "I think that's the most beautiful county in West Virginia." I'm like, "Well, come see us."
It's amazing how you hear that a lot.
Do you hear that as well? Yeah, I do too.
Charleston, they say, "Oh, it's so beautiful."
Mm-hmm. I do too. I hear the same thing. So yeah, we just, you know, that, and that's my goal was just for this year. It's just to keep us at the forefront, keep Hampshire County on people's minds, and let them know that, yep, we're here and we're open for business.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
You too.
And just since we got just a couple of minutes there, I'll, something I didn't report on in the President's Report, and I'll touch on it now, again, because it, it does have to do with, in somewhat relation to Convention and Visitors Bureau. And that was, I spoke with previous Commissioner Cannon, Delegate Cannon now. And, and he is aggressively working towards, figuring out the, the way that the hotel-motel or, or the Airbnb, yeah, excuse me, Airbnb taxes are figured and collected and what were slated by law to do and not to do. So he is, he reported to me the other day that he is working with a few key individuals to try to get some clarification on that for us moving forward. So I should have mentioned that in my President's Report, but I missed it. So I thought it was a good time to put that in there. We now have Mr. Hott and Mr. Ronkin, and they were going to review the electrical bid for the courthouse that we opened up at last meeting.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
So at your request at the last meeting, we reviewed the, the electrical bid for Mets Electric, the only one who submitted at, to the bid proposals. Went through it. Everything, everything looks good on the numbers. I've consulted with an electrician about some of the things, and everything seemed to be online with Mets Electric's bid proposal. In the interim, Mr. Ronkin has checked with the...
I, I did two things. I went back to CIFA, the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Agency, and told them basically where we were at with the bid. I did get written approval from the Executive Director from CIFA that said that we can go forward with just one bid because we did meet the requirements for the competitive bidding. We did actually have three contractors meet at the pre-bid meeting, so she said we were fine. The other thing I did is I started the process through the State Historical Preservation Office to have them review what we are proposing to do with this contract. Because this is a historical building, they require, we are required to get approval from SHPO in order to go forward. So that process has started. They have 30 days. I did it literally the day after we met, so that the clock is already ticking on that. But I did talk to them before. They saw no problem with what we were going to do. But now it's formally in their hands. So once that's back, we have done everything that, that the Courthouse Facilities Agency requires us to do. So we're there.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for doing that research for us. Mr. Ronkin, would you mind going over the numbers there again for us? Just the summary sheet and the cost and what we're doing exactly for the public?
Yes. We were awarded through CIFA a $100,000 grant. They, they awarded the maximum out for the, for the courthouse. It requires a $20,000 match, so we knew that we were in for $120,000. The, the Mets Electric bid came in higher. Came in at $141,480. But like Mr. Hott said, we did the math. Matt did the math, and we feel that this is a valid bid. So we are approximately $21,480 over what the county had signed up for.
Okay, thank you.
We have to remind, this is just phase one of two phases in this project if we decide to go forward.
Correct. And we, as we all know, we have a, an old courthouse. It's a pretty one, but, but it is old, and it costs money to get it up, up to date. Gentlemen, any comments or action you want to take at this time?
Gentlemen, I would actually just ask for a formal recommendation of the County Commission. I mean, we delegated the assignment down to trust you guys to evaluate the bid and make a recommendation, and I trust you. So what, what do you recommend?
If we're interested in upgrading the electric and we're getting $100,000 in the grant, I would say it's, it's not costing the county much to get us started. So my recommendation is we move forward, if, if we can afford it.
That said, gentlemen, I would move that we accept the bid as presented today and move forward with the application of the $100,000 grant funds towards the project.
I'll second that motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the electrical bid from Mets that's been reviewed by Mr. Ronkin and Mr. Hott. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
For your work.
Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate you all working through that for us.
Glad to do it.
Yeah. It's, it's an important first step because without it, we can't do anything else. We can't get heating and air conditioning upgraded. We can't do anything until we get the electrical upgraded, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we're running a little bit ahead of schedule. And Clerk needed to step out for just a second. Chief Hammack and Deputy Turner, I see you guys here today. Did you all have something for us?
I don't have anything for you unless you want an update.
We got time. If you got a quick update, come on up, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So things have been going pretty well, I think, so far. We are finishing up an audit for our EMS billing. Going through the last year, we were able to find some discrepancies and, and receive a significant amount of funding back that was missed sometime in November, December timeframe, and then for Medicaid over the last eight months. So we have done some, some strives in trying to be fiscally responsible and, and retain some money that, that wasn't going to be received previously. As far as the new structure goes, it's going very well. The new schedule, we have had mostly positive impact. Really, no complaints from the employees. I think they like the new schedule. Besides that, everything's going well. The one, only issue that, that I see forthcoming is the Springfield. We have received some, some complaints from the Springfield area that we are unable to staff them overnight because of budget constraints. When I was hired into this position, I was told this is how much the funding we have left for the year. This is how, how can you make it work best? So as management goes, we made the decision to, to do with what we could. So we staff, staff the Springfield Station whenever Company 11 has staffing during the day. So daytime staffing every day, Monday through Sunday, so far, as long as 11 has staffing. We've been staffing the Springfield Station from about 8:00 AM till 5:00 PM. We don't have the facilities in Springfield to do overnight 24-hour staffing. It, that's something we're working towards, and it will hopefully be complete by September at the latest. So with our, with the fee increase, we are able to staff Springfield 24/7 moving forward. That fee increase takes place July 1. We can start receiving funds, I would guess, somewhere in mid-August. So we've set the date of September 1st to give Springfield back their 24-hour staffing. It is a discussion that needs to be had amongst the Commissioners and amongst HCSA Board of if we want to make any changes with... uh, of if we want to make any changes with staffing, if there is any changes that we could possibly make. However, I, I don't believe with the current funding projection that we're going to be able to staff them 24/7 until the September timeframe. But we are doing everything we can, uh, as far as staffing goes. We cover Springfield as much as we can. Uh, running the mileages, Springfield is about an 18-minute response time. If, if we're lights and sirens, we get there about 15 minutes, which is actually shorter than if Augusta's first due area is Rio, it takes them about 20 minutes to get to the town of Rio. Same with Slainsville, it takes them about 22 minutes to get to Bloomery Pike area at the end of Slainsville. So their response times aren't far off from, they're actually a little bit shorter than the response times elsewhere in the county. So we're not, not necessarily having longer response times than anywhere else. Unfortunately, they do have a station and did have a station, uh, that had some staffing at some point prior to the volunteer system failing. I would be open to if there is volunteers in the Springfield area, uh, with the Springfield Fire Department or any EMS employees or EMS volunteers in that area, EMTs or drivers, come join HCSA as a volunteer and help us staff it at nighttime. I would fully support that, we'll get them through the minimum amount of training that they need, a lot of them already have EVAC. We have a stocked ambulance down there in that station 24/7. If there's volunteers that can get it out, that would be great. Um, they just come, become a member, a volunteer member of HCSA and, and we can support that as much as we can. So, uh, I know that the county is technically running the Springfield department, however, we are also a volunteer agency, we do accept volunteers, and I would love if we had a few of the Springfield volunteers ready to step up, that we can, uh, get them in there and they can help us, uh, help us keep it staffed overnight in the interim until September. And even if, after September, if they would like to continue to serve their community as volunteers in EMS role, you know, we can, can have them help us support that system and, and that would take some of the burden off of, of the county as well. So, any comments on that, guys?
And one thing to add too is that if there is anybody that would like...
Hammack, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
If there is anybody that would like to volunteer at, anywhere in the county for any of the, um, volunteer stations there with the SAMSA grant that we have, um, it covers the cost of initial certification and recertification for all volunteers for EMS in the county, uh, while we hold that grant. So even if their certifications have lapsed, uh, we can assist them, uh, in gaining them back if they are still able to get them back without having to take a full class.
Thank, thank you all for that information and I, uh, yeah, I appreciate both of your, your efforts, well, HCSA as a whole, I appreciate your efforts, I know it's been, uh, a, a rough couple of months and, um, but things are, are looking much better, I believe, and, you know, I, the, the idea of, uh, volunteers for HCSA, uh, I, I've always said that's a wonderful idea and, uh, I hope, I hope Chief that you can, uh, continue to put that out there and, and hopefully maybe make some progress there.
Thank you.
Chief, I had, I had a quick question that you may or may not know the answer to. I understand that our current staffing of Springfield is based on available staffing from Romney, uh, from the Romney Volunteer Rescue Squad. Do we understand the relationship between our current staffing hours, like throughout the day, in relation to, uh, demand in the Springfield areas? Anybody look and see if that, seen if that's kind of a match or if that's a mismatch?
Um, correct, so during the daylight hours, I think it's about 70% of the call volume in Springfield falls in that range of when we're, we're giving staffing. The minority of the calls are overnight. However, um, right now Romney is doing a great job, Company 11 is doing a great job staffing their station during the day. They're at about 95% coverage during the daylight hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, um, where they don't have quite as many volunteers as at nighttime, which is to be expected. So unfortunately, they're only covering one to two nights a week, um, with staffing. Now, with that being said, we're double staffing Romney on those nights because we cannot with the facility send our staffing to Springfield because the facilities aren't up to code. So we need to get a bunk room in there and a shower in there, which is something that we're getting, we're going to getting some contractors in there to give us pricing to figure out how much that's going to cost to get it ready before, um, before the September timeframe. But that is why, you know, e- every once in a while, there is staffing in Romney and we are also staffing Romney because of that issue. Uh, like I say, it is about, about a 13 to 15-minute response time from our Sunrise Boulevard Station, uh, to the center of, of Springfield. Granted, there is a lot of roads that are off the beaten path in Springfield, which are taking additional five to seven minutes to get to, uh, no different than like I say, Rio or, or Slainsville's areas. So, although I do, I do see the issue and I want nothing more than to have staffing there 24/7 because there is a station there that we are able to utilize and we do have the equipment to, to staff it, we just need the manpower and the budget to staff it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Commissioner.
No, sir. Thank you both for...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Yep. Okay, I believe the planning commission has a cell tower permit application for upgrades. That would be Mr. Ronkin. And this is Hardy Cellular at 1300 Ben's Knob Trail.
Commissioner Mance, did you receive that from Becky? The, the, okay. We're, we're trying to get you everything, so.
All good, I've been able to review it.
Uh, just for the public's view, this is not a new tower, this is an existing tower with just upgrades, approximately $20,000.
So gentlemen, as, as we're reviewing this, this is one I've actually been paying attention to a little bit over the last few years. Is there, is there any way somebody can summarize what this review process looks like? I, I think I have an understanding, I went through the cell tower permitting ordinance and I went through our application, but can somebody from the, either Mr. Ronkin or any other commissioner kind of explain to the public what this process looks like? Cause we see it happen pretty frequently, at pretty much a time a modification permit comes in.
Ralph, do you want to... I'll take a stab at it. Not sure whether I'll take a good stab at it, but I'll take a stab at it. So...
It's all, it's all good, I promise you, I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat, I'm just trying to make sure that we all understand the process the same way so that we can talk about it.
So, historically, and I, I'm only going back about three or four years, um, there was sensitivity to the cellphone towers. And I, I think that even, uh, uh, the clerk will probably add to this discussion too. Uh, so the planning commission took a active role in ensuring that, uh, cellphone towers met, uh, the requirements for the county. There was a period of time, I believe, uh, that we had a limit on the height of them. Am I correct in saying that? I believe there was. That is, that has gone away. Uh, this tower, I just looked at it, is 196 feet tall. Um, but this is something that actually, Commissioner Mance, we actually have discussed a little bit in the, in the planning commission, whether or not a simple upgrade, and maybe we do it by dollar amount, maybe we go back to the county commission and say if there are less than $20,000, $25,000, we would have approval at the planning commission level to approve simple upgrades with new towers still having to go through, still having to go through the county commission. From the, from my perspective and what I know from the last three years on the county commission, or on the planning commission, uh, because of the sensitivity at the front end of when we started getting towers in the county, this is why everything goes through the county commission. I'm not sure if that was a pretty feeble attempt, but that's my understanding.
I, I can...
It does, and I appreciate it. I mean, please Commissioner Eglinger, I apologize.
Well, I, I can add a little bit to that, Commissioner Mance, to help you understand, uh, first I'll touch on what, what Ralph said, you know, uh, years ago, prior to me being a commissioner, uh, to any of us being commissioners, obviously, um, the, the sensitivity to cellphone towers was, was, uh, definitely spoken by the people. Our ordinance was very different, uh, from what it is now. However, over the years, people decided that they really liked these things. Um, a- and I'll say, Commissioner, you know, I think we, as a county, were actually being avoided, uh, for updates a- and so on, uh, to our towers because of our stringent policy, um, which in turn, the people didn't like because their cellphones didn't work, where they, you know, they, different, different digital aspects of the world, uh, attitude has changed. So we, we did, and I was on this committee, uh, early on as a commissioner, I did go, uh, in and we revamped the, the, uh, tower ordinance. And since then, uh, we have seen more activity. Part of that's just because simply the, the industry, there is more activity, but I think too that we, although we still do have guidelines and we still, uh, are, are very responsible, I, I think we got out of that rut where they were avoiding our county. Um, so there's some history on that. As, as far as the process itself, um, you know, we tried to make the ordinance as, as clear as we could, uh, I'm not saying it's perfect, but, um, you know, and then it's, it's, it's the job of the, uh, the county planning office, uh, to take that application for improvements or updates that they're going to do and make sure they're falling within the ordinance and all our rules. And then, uh, after all that's done, it, it comes to us. And, and of course, we, we can review it, uh, I'm not saying that every time I review, uh, page for page, you know, if the planning office runs into a hurdle, they usually call me or another commissioner, uh, ahead of time to, to, to either smooth something out or, or figure out what's the problem is. Um, and by the time it comes here, it's, you know, it should be close to 100%.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it and I think that that was, uh, an approximate understanding of what I think I had on this process. I'm admittedly, I'm putting my local government attorney hat on and we're always looking for efficiency in government where we can create it. This is an administrative approval. Um, so really what's going on is we have a cell tower ordinance, which doesn't technically require a special permit for modification. So what we're doing is we're using our building code and our building permit process to have the same application. But we don't have provisions in our cell tower ordinance that would allow for, uh, county commission review of this. So I guess what I'm saying is, as long as the application is in compliance with our current cell tower ordinance, we'd have to approve it anyways. So what we can do, if we choose to do so, is just delegate that approval authority down to the planning office so that if it's deemed to be in compliance with our current cell tower ordinance, it doesn't need to come before the county commission. Because essentially, if every, if it was a complete application and it was in accordance with that cell tower ordinance and we denied it, we'd be violating our own ordinance, um, because we haven't created that review authority for ourselves. Um, so I'm just, I've watched this process and I think that we can streamline it, uh, and make it a little bit more straightforward for everyone. I think we can still leave the ability for any questions that ha- happen at the planning office to come back to us, but this is a, this is an administrative process that can be handled by our staff.
If I could add one thing, uh, Chris Phelps, the MDIA inspector that works closely in our county, he actually reviews these also to make sure electrical and all the other items, um, meet our, our ordinance. So it, it, it does get looked at, it gets looked, it gets looked at very closely. I, I, I would definitely support Commissioner Mance's view that, um, we could simplify the process, um, or you could provide direction to the planning commission that, short of a new tower, which I think new towers are where you could get some feedback of both kinds, but short of that, something that, the tower is already up and all they're doing is putting either another node or they're putting a backup generator, I, I'm not quite convinced that you gentlemen need to take the time to review it, but it's your decision.
Well, and, and I, I would agree, uh, uh, at least partially on, on what we're talking about here. The, the only, uh, I guess, not really caveat or, the, the only, uh, issue I would bring to the table, gentlemen, is that, um, and, and I think, looking back when I was on the committee, you know, I, I think part of the reason we encouraged at least, a- and, and you know, the whole technical part of the application probably doesn't need to come to the commission because, uh, and I, and I think Commissioner Mance has a point that, you know, the, the planning office has that, uh, ability to approve. However, a lot of times, a- and if it's a small update, it's, it's, it's not good and nobody even really realizes. But when trucks start going up roads and, and equipment starts moving in, a lot of times folks will call the commission before they call the planning office. And, and of course, we can, we can just tell them to call the planning office, um, but it, you know, I, I think, you know, at least maybe these first couple pages that, that explain where, what and how, probably should come to the commission simply for, uh, the ability to answer public awareness questions. So, and, and I think, looking back when I was on the committee, again, uh, that, that's probably a lot of our reasoning for going to the commission. You know, o- obviously like Ralph said, a, a new tower, uh, you know, the commissioner's phone or, or emails go to ding, um, and we should be able to, you know, I, I would rather be able to say, yeah, that's, that's, uh, happening here and this is how and this is when, um, a- and then, and then maybe tell them to call the planning office, but, uh, as one commissioner, I'd still like to see, not necessarily that we would have to approve or disapprove, but, you know, have them brought to us, at least the, a summary page of what's going on.
We could probably do better than that. Once we get these, once it gets through MDIA and all that, um, we could send it out via email, just like we did to Commissioner Mance and let you know, this is what is coming your way, um, so you're, you're aware of it. Um, I mean, we could also add a phone call, so hey, um, we've got an upgrade at, you know, Knob Hill or wherever it is, uh, just to give you gentlemen a heads up. Um, I, I'm just giving you an alternative for showing up on front of your, or on your agenda. We could do this simply by reaching out to you via email and a phone call if necessary for everything, but something significant like a new tower, which I, I still support going through the county commission. Up, up to you gentlemen.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand, uh, Commissioner Eglinger's position as well and I respect it. Um, you know, you're accountable to the public and you need to be apprised of the things that are going to affect the lifestyle of you, the citizens that you're representing. Um, mine is actually very much more, I, I'm a nerd and I'll just say that what I think is going on is that it technically, we don't have the ability to deny a permit if it's in compliance. So if we want that review capacity, uh, and we want that, that ability to deny or approve, then we kind of actually have to modify the ordinance to give it to the county commission. Um, but as far as just being, you know, aware of the permit applications, I completely agree with you, that would be a great thing for us to, you know... That would be a great thing for us to, you know, understand what's processing and what's coming into the county. But, I think that if we're going to continue to have that approval or denial happen at our level, we'd almost actually need to modify the ordinance to do so.
Gentlemen, is it consensus that we ask the planning commission to review the ordinance and review the approval process?
I believe so, yes.
So, it's a consensus, Rolf, that the planning commission take a look at the ordinance on cell towers and the current process we have for review and approval?
Okay. What we will do, I'll make sure that that's on the agenda for next week, and we will get you an answer and the way ahead that we would recommend, based on the review. I believe Commissioner Mance, we're going to work on getting him Zoom called in for next Wednesday, so he can add to his, add the legal side a little bit on the review. And as commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Rolf.
Thanks.
Okay, clerk, I believe we've hit all the main agenda items. Do we have anything else under, well, I know we do. What else do we have under housekeeping?
A few moderate things. I have an order here requested by the treasurer's office, and it's to establish, request to establish a banking account, and it's general county planning credit card account. This will allow the planning office to receive credit card payments, bottom line. So... Commission status account will be a three-signature account. See, the streaming signal has passed, but I may or may not have, I don't think I did scan this to Commissioner Mance. I overlooked that.
Just going to say I don't think I have it, but no...
Yeah, I realized that sitting here, that I don't think I got that to you, and I'm sorry. I got a couple more sheets that were in that stack.
I'm sure the gentleman in front of you can handle it.
I make a motion that we approve this order creating...
An account.
This account.
I'll second the motion. So, there's a motion on the floor for the planning commission to be able to follow this order for being able to accept a credit card. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Motion passed. And Commissioner Mance abstained, he didn't have the document in front of him.
And on the same pattern, again, I transmitted to Commissioner Mance, I overlooked setting these three personnel matters. One is regarding the 911 appointment, new hires in the tax office, second, and pay increases in the tax office, third, off the sheriff. And these are personnel matters that are within his budget and as department head per view.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation from the sheriff regarding the appointment of Logan Simpson, full-time position.
Okay, I'll second the motion. And there's a motion on the floor for the appointment of Logan Simpson in full-time 911 dispatcher position. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Okay. Motion passes, and again, Commissioner Mance didn't have these documents, so...
I'll also make the motion to approve the recommendation from the sheriff with regard to the appointment of Hannah Parker and Danielle Smith to the position of tax deputy.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And again, that's the motion for Hannah Parker and Daniel R. Smith to tax deputy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Motion passes.
And I'll also make the motion to approve the recommendation from Sheriff Sands regarding the consent to increase tax deputy Mackenzie Nelson's monthly pay rate, effective immediately.
Okay, and I'll second the motion to increase tax deputy Mackenzie Nelson's monthly pay rate. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Motion pass.
I apologize, gentlemen, for overlooking that. That was an oversight on my part.
No, no worries. No worries. Thank you for all the hard work and getting everything else good.
Well, should get all of it. We do have exonerations presented from the tax assessor. Did we send those to you, Mr. Mance?
I think I do have those.
I was kind of wrapped up with the levy hearing notice, and I think overlooked some stuff.
No worries. Make sure I've got balances and voices running balances. I don't think I do have the exonerations.
No, I believe you don't know that we think about it, sorry. Man, we got your picture back.
No, no worries.
I will make a motion that we approve the exonerations as submitted by the clerk.
Assessor.
Assessor, sorry.
I'll second the motion to approve the exonerations submitted by the assessor since our last meeting. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Motion passed.
Yeah, again, my apologies.
No worries.
You stamp those, don't you?
So, we have, and I think we made it to this, well, maybe not this one, this is the justice program, you guys approved applying for it, it has been approved, I got a letter saying approved for $30,000, paperwork here says 60, so I'm not sure just exactly where we are on that, but it does require resolution, so it will require an action by the commission. Lots of signatures for the president to sign, and if it wasn't the resolution, we wouldn't need it. That one came kind of last minute and was already marked for signatures.
A resolution to accept a grant, do I understand that correctly?
Yes. Accept the terms and conditions, yes. Yeah, that's what I said, I didn't understand that, why it says 60. Well, it's the amount of salaries that are involved. This is the, I think this grant encompasses two.
I can provide a little clarity, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd just like some clarity on the numbers there, Rolf.
So, I talked to the gentleman that runs this program at the justice, at West Virginia Justice, and he had initially sent the email with all those attachments, and that is the requirements, we need to sign all those things in order to start getting the $30,000. He wanted a budget summary, he wanted to just have us put the budget summary that we had in our application, which, that's what I did. I included, this is from the application for the grant, which we had asked for $60,000. That's why you see the $60,000 amount. He wants us to simplify it, and what I mean by that, he wants to simplify it. In his email and his follow-up phone call conversation, he said, do me a favor, just send me your application with the $60,000. I'm going to change it to the $30,000 you got, and I'm just going to zero everything out and give the $10,000 match. He doesn't want all this information. He just wants, we get $30,000, and we're going to put $10,000 in there somewhere he is, in order to show the match. Obviously, as we currently have it, we have $171,000 showing as the match. He didn't want that. He goes, get that down to $10,000. And then, he stopped me and he said, no, he said, do me a favor, just send it in, and I'll do the math on your budget to show 30 and 10. It's kind of a back way of doing it, but since this document doesn't require any signature, I was like, okay, we'll go with the gentleman that runs this program, what he suggested.
I would add, when we apply for reimbursements on this grant, which I've done in prior years, and I appreciate Mr. Rolf in doing it now, they just want that match zeroed out as quick as possible. And usually, it's, you know, happens in two or three reimbursement periods, and we're done. The match is satisfied, we move on, we get the whole grant back, so, or the whole reimbursement sum. So, again, it's how they work it, and it's pretty user-friendly, but...
If you do notice, we're already six months into the 12 months of the grant. So, he told me to call back after you gentlemen signed the paperwork, so he can walk me through, because he said, you don't have to sit there and, for the next six months, try to make up. He goes, I'm going to show you how you can just get that $30,000 in one draw, because he's going to go backwards to the beginning of October and basically pull all the matching that we've had with the pro officers that have been working since one October, so he can, he can just zero it out. He seemed to be a person that's very interested in efficiencies. He wants to make it one draw, and he wants to make it 30, 30 and 10. And that's where we're at. I probably should have just done the work, you know, instead of telling, letting him tell me to just send this back in. That's a real long answer.
He has to walk you through it, and I never understood it, so I did it the hard way. But, he has been wanting people to do that for some time.
In his email, he said, don't add any more matching. But, we do need all that signed in order to start the process to get our $30,000.
So, none of the signed papers, gentlemen, reflect how they ask for the figures. I guess, Rolf, I would make a suggestion to him that we get a summary of the figures, that, since he has a complicated way of doing it, and I realize we're six months into it and everything, so, you know, that's fine, but it would be good for us to have an explanation of how he divvies it from the state level.
I would love to see his simplified version, because we do a lot of work to get to this point, for him to come back and go, just put 30 and 10.
Yeah, the application is completely different from...
Yes, it is. They want to see that we're spending the money. And in this document, it reflects all the costs associated with those pro, the program. And like I said, it's significant, it's, you know, it's almost a quarter million dollars when you look at what the grant and what we pay for that program on an annual basis.
And the Board of Education also puts some match money in there, too.
Okay, and, you know, we do need the pro officers, so...
I make a motion that we approve receiving the grant and from the Division of Administrative Services for the Justice and Community Services, and to the terms that are set forth herein.
And I'll second the motion. Did we lose Commissioner Mance?
Yes.
Okay, we still have quorum, we still have two commissioners, so, a motion on the floor and seconded for the resolution to work with the grant for the pro officers in the schools. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I believe one is the county clerk needs to sign it, and then...
He needs to sign that one, and then I got to sign all these.
All those. Maybe the next one.
That may be the next one.
So, they're behind, and they're trying to catch up. So this is a grant that would normally be published 90 days, even up to 100, 120 days beforehand that it's due. But because they're behind, they announced the grant opening on Friday evening with it due April 4th, 30 days, less than 30 days. So, we are working diligently to get this grant because it's significant. We got money last year in the, well, we've had money for the last 14 years, and it's a request for over $200,000. And it just has to be, it has to be done sooner than later. So, what we're asking is you sign the application for this grant, and so we can start moving forward on it to get it back to the agency.
So it's a fund request, Justice and Community Services Fund Request, an amount of 208,291 for the South Branch Valley Day Report Center.
I do, I did send that to Commissioner Mance yesterday, and I did CC you two gentlemen on it. So Darren told me what, if we're fully funded on it, what it gets, which is significant numbers in order to do his telehealth program in the three counties, would fully fund that. And it would also, apologize, there was one other item in there that it would fund, I believe, three positions in his offices.
And we currently work with Hampshire, Hardy, and Pendleton County on that, Commissioner Brill.
We just need a motion to approve the application process. Make a motion that we approve signing the application process for this grant request.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Mr. Ronkin, thank you for all the hard work. It's a lot.
That, uh.
To keep up with.
That, that one was annoying.
Gentlemen, I believe that brings us on the agenda to, only thing I have left is invoices. And to remind people, we do have a special work session that's been advertised regarding the budget, whereas the code requires that the department heads are able to come and present their requests to the commission, so they're scheduled. Some have been done by letter, but the, the elected officials in particular will be coming Friday afternoon at 1:00. Looks like we got about two hours' worth of work to do there. Our staff will be assimilating those numbers and others as we get ready to have that time together.
I'll make a motion that we approve the invoices as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve all invoices since our last meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. That's all we got. Do I hear any public comment? Our, our public has dwindled down a little bit. Think they got bored. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.